Morning once again, we now will open up for our regularly scheduled council meeting. Will be led in prayer by Madam Clerk, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Oh God of might, wisdom and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, law enacted and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you now call the roll?
Counselors Williams here, Morgan.
Present.
Wes.
Present.
Mayor Kirkland.
Present. Move for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. At this time, we open up the floor, the phones and the lines of communication to see if there are any public comments on action items this morning.
Honored, we have received no telephone calls nor any emails, therefore no public comment at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Madam Clerk.
Resolution, whereas on May thirteenth, twenty twenty, the City of Chester approved an amendment to the fiscal year two thousand nineteen action plan to include projects to be funded with community development block grant coronavirus, CDBG slash CV funds. And whereas one of the projects which the city allocated funding is a short-term rental and utility assistance program for low and or moderate income Chester families directly affected by the coronavirus pandemic. And whereas such program was designed to provide a maximum of three months of rental assistance with total assistance not to exceed three thousand dollars. And whereas because of the extended time during which the coronavirus pandemic continues to affect low and or moderate income families in Chester, city council desires to increase the number of months of rental assistance to six months with total assistance not to exceed six thousand dollars. Now therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve, number one, that the CDBG slash CV short-term rental assistance program guidelines are hereby amended to provide for a maximum of six months of rental assistance in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars. And number two, that information on such changes to the program guidelines will be provided to the residents of Chester through the city's social media outlets, distribution flyers, and postings on the websites of the city and the Chester Economic Development Authority.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to enter into demolition fund agreements, DF dash twenty-one dash sixty-eight and DF dash twenty-one dash sixty-B with Delaware County Council, Office of Housing and Community Development, for the demolition of the following blighted structures located within the City of Chester. Number one, six twenty-six through six twenty-eight, West Sixth Street. Number two, six twenty-nine, West Sixth Street. Number three, two eleven Ivy Street. Number four, twenty-two fifteen, West Third Street. And number five, twenty-four oh five Chestnut Street. Further, that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to execute all documents necessary for this project for and on behalf of the city.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions?
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby grant permission and authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to PICO for the installation of three hundred plus or minus feet of new gas main at the following locations within the City of Chester in accordance with the documents on file in City Engineer's Office. Number one, East Twelfth Street from Potter to Hyatt Street. And number two, Hyatt Street from East Twelfth Street to Burton Avenue. Further, said permit is contingent upon a work being performed in a manner that is satisfactory to city council and PICO's compliance with all of the following conditions as outlined by the city engineer. Number one, PICO performs a half mil and overlay on all road openings exceeding one hundred feet or three patches within one hundred feet. Number two, PICO provides appropriate traffic control measures to ensure continual operation of city streets. And number three, PICO obtains all required road opening permits from the city as well as a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions?
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the city engineer to prepare specifications for the advertisement of bids for the replacement of the roof at Chester City Hall. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise for the aforementioned bid.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions?
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and as shown on expenditure approval list dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, attached hereto and made a part hereof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions?
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
At this time, before we... Well, let's do that first. Flip it a little bit. Are there any public comments at this time, Mr. Solicitor?
Your Honor, we've received no calls or emails and therefore no public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. So, at this time, as we continue to celebrate Black History Month, um, last council meeting, we celebrated our she-ros. Today, we celebrate a couple of our heroes, African-Americans who have done so much for our community and, um, set a path of excellence for our young people to follow. And so today, we want to honor and recognize two of our prominent judges who have, um, since transitioned from this life to another. Uh, we will never forget their accomplishments here in the City of Chester. And so today, we're honoring honorable judges Robert C. and Robert A. Wright with a citation from this council body. And the citation reads in this manner, says, whereas Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month, is an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans and dedicated time to recognize their impact in the United States. And whereas since nineteen seventy-six, every US president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. And whereas the origin of Black History Month dates back to nineteen twelve, is the evolution of Negro History Week, an event that began because of historian Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African-Americans. And whereas in the City of Chester, many African-Americans have earned achievements worthy of recognition because of their impact on and in our community. And whereas during this Black History Month, the City of Chester will recognize honorable judges Robert A. and Robert C. Wright. And whereas Robert A. Wright was the father of Robert C. Wright, both of whom were Chester natives and served as judges for the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, Pennsylvania. And whereas honorable Judge Robert A. Wright attended Temple Law School from nineteen forty-six to nineteen fifty and eventually opened a law office in the City of Chester. And whereas Honorable Judge Robert A. Wright was the first African-American to be named Assistant District Attorney to Delaware County and the first African-American to serve as a judge on the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County. And whereas Honorable Judge Robert C. Wright received his law degree from Villanova University and took over the law offices of his father, Honorable Judge Robert A. Wright, when his father was appointed to serve on the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. And whereas Honorable Judge Robert C. Wright served on many boards, including serving as a solicitor for Chester Housing Authority and President of Delaware County Republican Council before being elected as a state representative for the one hundred fifty-ninth Legislative District. And whereas Honorable Judge Robert C. Wright served as state representative for the one hundred fifty-ninth Legislative District for ten years until he was elected to the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. Whereas Honorable Judges Robert A. and Robert C. Wright had unique distinction of being the first father and son to serve on the bench at the same time. Now therefore, I am Thaddeus Kirkland, the council members of the City of Chester, Councilman Wemal Jacobs, Councilwoman Portia S., Councilman, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Elizabeth Williams, and Councilman William Morgan. All of us of the City of Chester recognize Black History Month by honoring the legacies of this father-and-son judge duo and their individual achievements as public service in our community and is presented this twenty-fourth day of February, twenty twenty-one. So we honor and can ask some of the council persons have relationships and know, uh, both of these judges down through the years and some for them opportunities to speak on this resolution or citation.
Well, thank you for this opportunity because I was sitting here thinking about Judge Robert Wright Senior and how he was the first African-American judge, uh, seated, um, on the Common Peace Court. And I had the opportunity, I was asked to sing, um, the Star Spangled Banner for that occasion. So it was history in the making and I got an opportunity to, um, to participate. And, uh, it was really exciting, um, for us or for me to see that happen. One, and they were both, um, senior and junior, very prominent men in our community who served everyone. It didn't make a difference who you were, they served everyone as well as their wives. And, uh, so I'm just glad to have been a part of their lives, you know, to have known them and to have participated in the seating for our first African-American judge in Delaware County.
Councilwoman.
I'd just say I met, um, Judge Wright when I was a child when I lived in Upland. And when they thought they could come and get us every night and lock us up and said they were going to take us to jail because we were protecting ourselves. And my dad got Judge Wright. They came and got us one night about twelve o'clock to lock us up. And my dad told him to call my judge. And they called my lawyer and they said, "You got a lawyer?" My dad says, "Sure, I got a lawyer." So then after that, they stopped coming down on Race Street, locking us black children up for fighting for rights. That's when I met Judge Wright.
This is, this is excellent and this is why we do this. I just talked to my younger colleague, Councilman Morgan, and asked him, he's one of our young, well, he is the youngest colleague. But this is why we do this, to share information such as this so we could pass it on to young, uh, local leaders in our community so that they might one day be able to pass on, uh, the same conversation and legacy and truth-telling about those who serve so diligently and faithfully in our community. I, I, the rights have been, um, um, friends of our family down through the years. I remember when my eldest brother, William, transitioned, the first person to come to our house and spent about two and a half hours was Judge Wright Senior, was the elder Wright, uh, just sitting around shooting the breeze, talking about good old days and, and talking about his relationship with my brother. It, it did our hearts good to know that, um, there was a judge in our community that would take the time out, come by and console us, uh, during our time of grieving. And also, um, Robert Wright Junior. I had the distinct pleasure of following him, uh, becoming state representative of the one hundred fifty-ninth Legislative District. But more so, uh, being the first African-American from Chester, being the first state representative from, from Chester to come, uh, go to Harrisburg and be elected as chair of the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus, that has never been done before. Um, we were able to achieve that, uh, because every other, like, every other chair of the Black Caucus was elected out of Philadelphia. So when we did that, we were able to achieve that, the first person I called was Robert Wright, uh, Bobby Wright, uh, Judge Wright. Uh, he gladly came to Harrisburg, swore me in as the chair of the Black Caucus and that was just an awesome, awesome, awesome day in, in my life. I always remember him and love both of them for all of the care and support that they've given each and every one of us. So that's your history lesson for the beginning. So with that, we want to make sure that we put this downstairs on display in our Black History just lay downstairs and also make sure that we get, um, copy of the copy so that we might be able to send to the family, to Florence Wright, SW. Right? Okay. This time, um, before we adjourn, Councilwoman, did you have something to say about the?
Yes, I, I, I do. I just want to, first of all, thank the men and women who have been working so hard with the snow event last Thursday and Friday. Um, and that's the men and women in the Streets Department and also the Parks Recreation and Maintenance Department. Um, we have one female and she works just as hard as the men. She's out there doing everything that they're doing. And we're just so proud of them, their commitment to, uh, the depart, their respective departments and to the city and the city's residents. Um, the men were deployed, they came out, one, one on last Thursday, they came out maybe around, um, uh, six o'clock in the morning. And then on Friday, they came out around four. And, and they didn't get off until about eleven or twelve the night before. And, uh, one, a couple of my men were involved in near, in a near mishap. You know, one, uh, of, of the staff members was in his truck and he started to slide sideways coming down a hill. Just imagine how frightening that would be to anyone, um, out there trying to protect and, and serve the city. So when I see things on Facebook and there's no punt intended towards our receiver, the receiver is here from the state to do a particular job and that's what he does. And, uh, we're all working and collaborating with the receiver. Um, we want to do what is necessary so that we can change things and make things better in terms of our finances and our ability to continue to serve the community. But it, it hurts me because some of the men and women in our departments are your relatives and your friends. And when I hear things like, or see things like, uh, "Thank you, Mr. Receiver, for the snow removal" or "I've never seen snow removed like that before," and that's, that's simply not true. It's not true. We're doing what we've always done and with very limited resources, meaning staff as well as equipment. But my men have always been trained to, uh, deal with snowstorms. And they do an excellent job. So when you're giving kudos on Facebook or wherever you are, just remember that some of your family members and friends are working to protect you during these snowy bits. And we're doing the very best that we can with limited resources. But don't forget to thank the men and women who are out here protecting you while you're home asleep and safe and warm.
Let me see.
Okay. I'm just asking you to please think about the men and women who continue to serve you to the best of their ability. Thank you.
Do you, Councilwoman? Councilman?
Um, Councilwoman, thank you again. I, uh, I would just reiterate that as well because I see your, those individuals within your department, Councilwoman's department as well, that go out there as essential workers, um, every day, no matter if it's rain, sleet, hell or snow, and make sure that the, uh, the streets are filed, that the trees are removed from debris from hurricanes or, or bad weather. So they do a damn good job with the equipment that they have or the resources that they have. So, so thank you, uh, for acknowledging that as well and for continuously to put those individuals out onto the streets and make, on the streets to make sure that, uh, we can get to where we need to go towards our destinations. Um, what I want to speak on today, and it won't be a lot, but, uh, the Maryland Council along with partnering with other, uh, stakeholders or leaders within the community, continuously try to assist the communities, whether it's with renters or homeowners or even businesses. Um, earlier, within a pandemic, we were able to use some of our CDBG cares relief monies for businesses to help them through the pandemic. Um, we, what we're doing right now is we're going to partner with Comcast. Comcast has a program that they call Rise that is going on in big metropolitan areas. Uh, so most notably, they're doing it in Philadelphia. Uh, we were able, were able to partner with Comcast, uh, within their Philadelphia program to offer more assistance to the business community in the City of Chester. Um, we're going to have a webinar on March third. I don't have the time exactly right now. There will be a flyer that's going to be created. Uh, we'll put it on our website, we'll put it on our social media. Uh, this is going to be a grant, uh, program for businesses within the City of Chester, Chester-operated. Um, they have to be within, uh, business within the past three years, uh, minimum at least, um, and upwards of a ten thousand dollar grant. So, uh, be on the lookout for more information, uh, to come within the, uh, the next few days with that. The application opens up on March first, I believe, March first. Um, so again, we're just doing everything that we can to try to offer as much, uh, resources and support to the immunities or to those individuals within the City of Chester. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And, and let me just add to that. Councilman Morgan has been doing a yeoman's job.
Yes.
When it comes to, uh, helping our small businesses or our businesses here in this city. He has been working very hard and diligently making sure that they have access to the finances needed for their businesses to stay afloat. We're in some very difficult times, but because of his efforts, because of him, uh, putting his hand to the power and not looking back, uh, many businesses, so kudos, Councilman, many businesses have already received the fruit of labor that he has put in and, uh, we look forward to being able to help many, many more. So thank you, Councilman, for all the work that you've put in to do, to making sure that these people and these businesses stay afloat.
Thank you. Councilwoman, you want to talk about the feeding program?
On Tuesdays?
Yes. Um, our care, our care friends from out of Philadelphia uh, will be, um, having food here every Tuesday for us. And I just want to thank, uh, all, all of the participants that have helped us in, uh, making sure that our people are taken care of as far as the food is concerned. Um, I just, I'm just so grateful that, uh, we keep and keep being able to serve our, our citizens here in the City of Chester. We start from nine o'clock on Tuesday morning and all you have to do is drive up, drive in, pick up your package and have a great day. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you for counsel. And, um, I'd just like to thank everyone that's been helping us through these, um, trying times. And, um, thank the Lord for what he's been giving us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Because it needs, uh, we've been, uh, it's been a blessing, uh, not only to us but to, to the resident, uh, CARES Act folks that have been working with us to make sure that we are able to distribute those foods. And so we appreciate all the work you've put in. And also, Councilwoman, all, appreciate all the work that these men and women have put in making our streets safe, um, for our constituency. We do have, um, do want to say one thing on the vaccination piece. And that is this, uh, my, um, our colleague, Councilman Jacobs, is not here today, still under the weather. However, I'm so proud of the work that has been done by his department, particularly Health Department, under the leadership of, uh, Ms. Livia Smith and Ms. Rosetta Carter. We partnered with Crozier by way of Ms. Gwen Smith this, that last Thursday, well, not just this last Thursday and Friday, but, uh, during this month of February, we've been partnering with Ms. Gwen Smith of Crozier and Crozier Hospital and their partners. And, uh, they have graciously consented to go to our senior citizens' dwelling places where they, where they live because our seniors are finding it hard to get out, uh, to get the vaccination. And so they've already visited a number of the senior dwelling places to provide them with vaccinations and the seniors are greatly appreciative. And we knew, uh, something big was happening or something great was happening when, uh, just last Thursday, the storm came through, the snowstorm came through. And it was a last-minute decision to make to say, well, we're going to keep the building open so that they can at least try to come and get the vaccinations. Well, over a two-day period, even the snow and the sleet and then the ice, over five hundred residents were vaccinated of, on Thursday and Friday. So our hats are off to our Health Department. Our hats are off to Ms. Livia Smith, to Ms. Rosetta Carter and all of the men, all of the men in the Health Department, Mr. Gary Collins and all of our guys in the, and ladies in the Health Department who stepped up to the plate and assisted us as we, um, were able to administer, not we, I didn't do it, but they were, as our nurses were able to administer uh, the vaccinations to so many, so many grateful people. Um, you could just see the sigh of relief on all those seniors' faces. Uh, and I want to say kudos to, to our Health Department, uh, kudos to Councilman Jacobs and all the work that, uh, that they have put into this. There are going to be more vaccinations at Crozier, I think it's this weekend. Um, but they're coming and they're going to continue, um, Gwen Smith is going to continue to, uh, go out to our community and, uh, make sure that our seniors are taken care of. And so we, we want to say thank you to Crozier and thank you to, uh, Ms. Smith and her team as well. Um, our Health Department is second to none.
That's right.
And I can say that with confidence, second to none.
Right.
And so we're, we're, we're grateful. Finally, I, I just want to give a little update on our, you know, not finally, next to it, but our Police Department. And you may notice that a number of guns have been taken off the streets. A lot of drugs have been taken off the streets and crimes are being sought. My hat goes off to our police officers who prevented a young lady from taking her own life uh, because of their quick actions. And we'll, we'll, I'll talk more about that at later date. But I want to say that our officers are in the streets, they are very active. Uh, and we have, we're, we're now putting up signs and Councilwoman and I, and matter of fact, this whole council will be, uh, involved in our- in our cleanup effort for our community. Councilwoman West and I will be getting together today, where we've already been together. We'll get more involved in our cleanup effort as we move towards our spring, praying for spring. Praying real hard for spring. And so we're looking forward to doing that. Finally, I just want to say I listened to Secretary Daven, Secretary of Department of Community Economic Development. I listened to his comments as he spoke in front of the Appropriations Committee. He said, "I found something to be very shocking, but it is what it is." He said that he didn't recall there being conversation about an amount of money that was going to be provided for the city in the efforts of helping us financially. I think sometimes everybody forgets that we have a crisis when it comes to our pension. My understanding, hopefully it's still there, was that there's some funding to follow that support. So I just want to be clear with the secretary because he could always pick the phone up. I know I've been doing all the calling most of the time. I'm very clear on the number that I heard of support, very clear. Because at the end of the day, I received another phone call from the Deputy Secretary. And the Deputy Tech Secretary informed me that, "Sorry, we won't be able to give you that kind of funding at this time." So I just want to be real clear. When folks say some things, maybe we can start documenting stuff because I would never just pull a number, fifteen million dollars, out of the sky. Not unless someone made that comment to me. And so I'm surety sure that they're watching. Hopefully, I'll get a call and we can have an honest dialogue about how we're going to help our city financially.
Mayor, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Rodney Robertson. He missed, I did thank our departments for the snow removal efforts. And Mr. Rodney Robertson has been with us for quite a while. And then we have Mr. Mark Alexander. And under their leadership, along with Mr. Jones and Mr. Wayne Lee, those four leaders have been very helpful during the snow removal and what have you. We always have point of reference, a point of contact. And I want to thank you, gentlemen, for your support.
Ditto. Guy's been working extremely hard. We appreciate that. We appreciate that.
I want to, I'd like to thank Mr. Jones. He's over there forming miracles on a roof. It's leaking, it's leaking, it's leaking. But he is up there on the top of that roof stopping it from leaking. So thank you so very much, Mr. Jones, to take that risk. Things happen here in the city of Chester, in here, that people don't know about. So to me, when you say bad things and think we're not doing what you feel that we should do, that's not true. We're working very hard here in the city. Everybody that's in here is working. So nobody has like one job belonging to this person or one job belonging to that person. We all get in and get the job done. With what we have, what they took away from us, they need to be able to show me and some papers to tell me what I need to do. I don't like by mouth. I like in writing. And so that's all I ask for. We're doing our job. We're doing over and above our job. To the citizens in Chester, we're always going to take care of you. Thank you.
Madam Councilwoman and Madam County Women and Councilman. I'm going to end this by saying this. My youngest daughter always told me, she said, "Dad, haters are your elevators." So we're about on the ninety-eighth floor right about now. Having said that, this council meeting is now adjourned.